Mr. Converse class for Zoology. And I'm an on-call worker for my grandpa. He needs work, help for anything like we. My specialty is demoing and cleaning up and painting. His is everything. So he's got a wide variety of skills. So I kind of take up after a little bit of them. Like the painting.
That's great. We honor students every month here as Senior Month. And I think that you got the best gift. You know, that Yeti cooler is pretty cool. Our work gloves. Our work gloves. I think that's, you know, most of T-shirt or something. Congratulations on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck to you in the future.
All right. And if grandpa and family stays around for about five minutes, we will be taking a photo with you momentarily. Our next award, and actually this school has two students that have awards this evening. I'm going to ask our dynamic principal, Dr. Gordon, to come up front. As she prepares to come up, I want to come on up, Dr. Gordon. All right. And so we have two awards. She's just going to go right in order. But the first award has to do with an award from the governor. And the second award is our spelling bee winner. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Gordon to begin, and then we'll...
I'd like to introduce Alyssa Babcock. She is one of our students here at McClure. Would you come up, please? We're very, very proud of Alyssa. I was over 700, wasn't it entries, Mom? 777. Interested in the photography contest for Happy Birthday Kansas. And Alyssa won first place with a photograph that she took out at our school. So we're very proud of her.
We're proud of you. Any questions? Don't worry about them. And you want to introduce your mom?
Mom and dad are here, and her brother Roman. Would you stand, folks? Nicole and Julie, Pat and Alyssa. You have a question for Alyssa?
Any questions?
How'd you get your idea for what you wanted to photograph?
I, my mom literally asked me to take her photos. And I just liked taking the photos. Sometimes my brother would fight over who does this. So I guess I just like taking photos a lot.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So did you use an iPhone or did you use a real camera? What did you use for your phone?
It was a real camera.
Real camera?
Yeah.
A real expensive one, too.
Yeah. I had a lot of rules. Don't lose it. Don't break it.
Congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
And our next student that we're going to recognize is Poochita Gadam. And she has won first place in the county spelling bee for her age group. And we would like to have her stand up. She's a fifth grader. Sorry, I didn't introduce Alyssa as a fourth grader. Except for her. Congratulations.
She's great. Thank you. Did you see your dad?
My dad.
So as a first-place spelling bee winner, you're going on to Wichita, correct?
Yeah.
To continue the competition. And they may have a question or two for you. And what was the most difficult word that you had to spell correctly?
I think it would be contemptuous. I don't recall studying that one.
She doesn't recall studying that.
Ms. Bowley, you have a question?
That's what I was going to ask. How long, how much time do you put in studying for the spelling bee?
Not much.
She's really very gifted and talented. She had to make a choice between the spelling bee, going to the state spelling bee contest, and participating in the someday math contest, which are both going to be on the same Saturday. So she chose the state spelling bee contest. She is very, very talented, a young lady, and gifted in many ways. We're very, very proud of her.
Thank you for bringing that honor to our district. We thank you for doing that.
One other comment before we move on from that topic. We had a former member of our Board of Education who just was replaced after 12 years of, 13 years of service on the board. And she won the national spelling bee. So if you need a local reference when you win the state and you go to Washington DC and win the Scripps National Spelling Bee, we can connect you with Dr. McCarthy, and she can give you some pointers.
All right. And at this time, we have our proclamations. But in addition to the proclamations, they are down in the proclamation section. But we always acknowledge those during the highlight section. You have two proclamations, the counselor as well.
We have the other one. We have the other one.
Oh, you have the other one back there?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to start off with our, in fact, we'll start off with our counselors. And then we will head on to our Black History acknowledgement because we also have an award for those students that are here this evening for the Black History. They've learned that they received a national award as well. So we'll do that after our counselors. So I'm going to ask Dr. Grimes to come on down. Can I just have the counselors come up here? All of them come on up here. I want them to introduce you, introduce themselves to you and our school because let me tell you, this group of people here, we know they're behind the scenes. We know they're working with students. We know they work with parents. But there's so many things that they do that you don't realize, whether that's in a class, they're teaching lessons in classrooms every day. They do our general education intervention program and reaching out to parents. They also help with our truancy. All right? So one of the skills that they have to have is organization. And if you're not organized, you're going to go a little crazy as a counselor because they do so much. So I wanted you to have firsthand who these counselors are. So if you just say your name and what building you're in.
Thank you. I am Sandy Marshall from Scott Magnet.
Ms. Marshall, how many years has it been up in this district?
Deanne Stewart at Eisenhower.
How many years?
Oh. My son's 24, so about 25 years.
Angie Siemens at Hope Street Academy, and this is year 25 for me.
Jean Ryan at French Middle School, and this is year eight.
Good evening. I'm Mallory Jacobs, and I'm at Woodson Elementary, and this is my year seven.
I'm Mona Ridley. I am at Woodson Elementary. This is my third year, and I'm happy to be here. And I'm the other half of Mallory Eminem.
So to read our proclamation, we have some lead counselors, too. So Jean is at French Middle School, and Mallory is at Woodson. So they are lead middle school and elementary counselors. But they're also leads in the state. So having opposite positions in the state counseling as well as making a name in the national realm for school counselors. So very proud of them. Very appropriate that they're reading their proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas school counselors are employed in Topeka Public Schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career rareness and development.
Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim February 3rd through 7th, 2020 as National School Counseling Week. And we want to thank all of you for your support, especially our building administrators. Mrs. Kealan Pierce is here with us this evening. And like Dr. Grimes said, Jean and myself, we are on the Kansas Board for School Counselors. And we had the opportunity to go today and represent school counselors for Mental Health Day. And we got to speak with many different people, especially in the House and Senate. So thank you for all of your support. We really appreciate that. And Eminem also brought you a gift from all of the counselors. So we hope that you're ready for a sweet treat. Thank you so much. And because we are educators, we have peanut and plain and separate bags and has any allergies.
Dr. Grimes, maybe you could share with us the total number of school counselors that we have in the district.
We have 52 school counselors.
Great. Thank you so much for all you do for our students. We know your impact is significant and helps kids evolve abilities, so necessary to help our kids grow and develop. So thank you so much for all you do.
As she continues passing those items out, we'll mention a couple of things. As you might remember, because of the board, we were able to double the number of counselors, you know, to two counselors at every school at a minimum, an elementary and middle. The high school has below the national average of the counselor pupil ratio. Inside your bag is the same coupon that you've gotten in past years, the little Valentine's bag. And those that aren't here will try to make it to all the schools tomorrow. The other item we have for our counselors as well while you're still here, we know that the chiefs won this week because I said it starts with C. We know who the big chiefs are. They're people that help with mental health and all the other things. And if you are a Facebook follower, many of our counselors were all excited, posting all kinds of memes. And so with our previous nominee for the Kansas State Counselor, she had her cheetah chief's day stuff on and counseling. So when we gave out to the Burnett staff, the teamwork photo, because this is the photo of all the players that were playing at the Super Bowl, it says on the back, strong teamwork. So each one of the counselors also has one for themselves as well, in addition to the bag with the coupon. And I'll leave this for Dr. Grimes. You all are exceptional. And I wanted them to know that many of you have been here for a decade or two and are working on the decade or two. The other person that was behind the scenes, Ms. Johnston, can you stand for a moment? This is her first year supporting the second year of counselors, as well as being assistant principal at T-Cow. Thank you, Ms. Johnston and Dr. Grimes for all that you do. And now for our final acknowledgement. And next year, Dr. Gray, Director of Instructional Services, will be working with elementary counselors. So we're excited about this continued growth in that social emotional realm. So the next and final item there of the Black History, or the month in which we highlight Black History events and prominent figures, we'd like for our college prep student, Tia Janay, to please come on. I'm sorry. Or Ms. Foster, who would you like to read?
It will be Angelique Jones.
Angelique Jones, of course. And that is Dr. News' command daughter. I think Dr. Gray will back. Ms. Jones, can you please come forward? As she comes forward, there were rolling pictures of Black History photos that we had on the screen as you entered. And off to the side where the counselors are, you see framed photos. And those are various winners from the MLK celebration. We also will be giving our winner for the Kansas photo contest, a framed picture of her with the governor. So it is, Ms. Hall, do you have that this evening? The governor's framed photo, because I think that's going to be presented to your student at the assembly. So all the other students shoot for that same award. If you don't have it this evening, then we'll be taking it over to the school building. But we ask for you to look at some of the art, and I'm going to turn it over to our student. Are you ready?
Proclamation of Topeka Unified School District Number 501, Black History Month, February 2020. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson, noted Black scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February 12, 1926. And for many years, the second week of February chosen as to conceive with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And now, therefore, be a result that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim February 2020 as Black History Month. And be a further result that a copy of this proclamation be included in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting, February 6, 2020. And witness whereof, we, the Board of Education of Topeka Unified School District Number 501, do hereby affix the signature of our president and official seal of the Board of Education this 6th of February, 2020.
As she has read that proclamation, we'd like for Mrs. Foster to please come forward with both of these acknowledgements. Under the college prep presentation tonight, these were going to be given at that time. But this will allow them to get the photo with the board with their IELTS, well done. Ms. Foster?
Good evening. And these are awards that have, were for writing, and they are from Schoolastic. And our students actually won, Angelique won for a written piece, For a Heart for the Boy, The Soul for the Man. And she won honorable mention. And Tia Janay Ray actually won the Gold Key Award for her poem entitled, "For Dark Girls
And now we will take a five-minute break for photos. And so we'd like to go ahead and have our students coming up first. And we'll start off with our spelling, our spelling bee winner. And then we will go straight to our photography winner. And the McClure family, come on up. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, everybody smile.
I baked all those grandpères.
You did. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I ran, ran, got some paper, went to the bank, signed some stuff. She ordered, and I sat down. It was perfect. Top ten Thai. So. There's a new one that's on, it's over 21st hand wash burner, right on in the teeth. And so the people who visit the kitchen at Top Ten Thai. So I'd love that they're so close to me because that's too far away. And they're new. I haven't grown a Chinese since I was a kid.
It's complicated. Isn't that the world? There's just another layer.
Top Ten Thai. Thank you.
Miss Ty.
I missed it.
Talking about it involves.
Oh, no.
Top Ten Thai. Yes, we bought the Johnson's off in there.
Thank you. I appreciate you for us.
Ready?
Thank you.
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 Thanks for coming.
Thanks for you.
Thanks for you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
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 Okay. Thank you ladies. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Ryan.
Next on the agenda is public comments.
Good night.
Thank you both for all of your.
State to begin, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the board. Guest your remarks to the board be respectful. If you have a complaint against a specific employee, we ask that you submit your written complaint to the superintendent. If the complaint is against the superintendent, please address your written complaint to either me as board president or to the clerk of the board.
Richard Goldie Jack. Richard Goldie Jack, Topeka, nineteen fifteen Southwest Webster. Stephanie Harson mentioned to me earlier this week that this week was counselor appreciation week. And I told her, I said, you know, I'd really love to be able to have the opportunity just to come and give that recognition to the counselors. I teach at Topeka and I'm a little dirty. I just prior to coming here, I was over at the high school cutting wood for the semi-formal bands on Saturday, so I apologize for my appearance. But what's so important about counselors is the fact that they're always there. You see teachers each and every day when you're teaching, but it's the counselor that's behind the scene. It's doing the work that most of us aren't even aware of. And they're the ones giving those phone calls at all hours of the night and day that says, you know, something major has happened. We need everybody, all hands on deck, and they truly are. At the same time, I understand how appreciative this district is when it comes to counselors because that was just a few short years ago, sitting across the table from the district, Indiana Topeka and the district agreed upon an increase to the stipend, to the addenda that counselors receive because I think this district, as well as the staff, teachers in the building, we realized then, as we do now, just how important our counselors are. So I just wanted to come forward and just say those few comments and just let the board know and everybody else just how appreciative we are of our counselors. And to hear the number fifty-nine mentioned from Dr. Grimes, I was like, I didn't realize we had that many. Because, you know, I see the ones that I have in my building and there are numerous, I couldn't count them on one hand. To then know that we have that many district-wide is truly a testament to how much we appreciate the well-being and the mental state and the welfare, not just of our students, but also of our teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldie Jack. Next on the agenda is business by consent. entertain a motion to.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Any second.
Mr. Campbell offers a second. Any discussions? Just note that the committee assignments were on the business by consent, so. I think they're all agreeable by everybody. Okay, we're ready to vote.
The votes open. All votes are in. Motion carries you down.
Okay, we're ready for superintendent's report.
At this time, as we pull up the PowerPoint, we want to remind the board, one of the strategic plan goals is focused on climate and equity. We are so pleased our director of first certified personnel and equity is in the audience, Dr. New. And in that goal, when we first wrote that and put these strategies, we had a focus on college and career readiness. So this evening, we're going to take a look at where we are now, from where we were when we first wrote that, and then we'll talk about where do we go from here. You will note that college and career readiness and college prep is also under your discussion item. And so in addition to giving a small piece of the report with the aid of students, since they're here this evening, we may as well put them to work. And they are here to also answer any questions you might have, and they've agreed to stay for that. So in addition to hearing a little bit from students and our college prep faculty, we also will get a chance to hear from Ms. Lauren Peel about how we continue to look at expansion of this concept. So in getting started, as we kind of look at that next slide and just the strategic planning goal on that second slide, well, really focuses on the piece of the climate and equity portion of ensuring that we reduce the disproportionality, a number of students who are not taking honors classes. So when we start at college prep, we really focused on the East Topeka area. So all students that are ninth graders now are students at Highland Park or would have lived in the Highland Park area because that was by design when we first opened it. After we opened college prep, what we learned is that not only did those students excel and grow anywhere from one to three grade levels within that year in regards to academic gains over time, we also knew that we had many parents that were outside of East Topeka that also wanted to participate. Therefore, if we go back to the slide of the strategic plan and the placement, the college and career placement, particular goals and strategies that is currently listed in the current strategic plan was about Tyler and making sure that we have that in place. But career academies, which is what we were talking about this evening, are also in place. We also, at that time, looked at TCal and expanding those options. We're going to go to the very next slide. So the philosophy of college prep. At this time, I'll ask Mrs. Foster to come forward. Mrs. Risley is the college prep administrator who also is the improvement specialist, who served previously at a college prep in Missouri. Ms. Risley, can you stand for just a moment? So she, her office is here at Central Office, but she also plays the role of college prep administrator, helping with admissions, contact for parents, and those related matters. She's also currently working on some of the college pieces. She'll be available for questions, as will I, but we'll be turning much of this over to our students and our team member. Ms. Foster, as you already know, is the teacher for ELA, but she also is the instructional coach for college prep. College prep model also is based on the instructional coach teaching halftime, which is what she did in her prior college prep experience, in addition to coaching. And so with that, as Ms. Foster comes to the mic, she'll introduce our students once again, who you've already met. The philosophy of the college prep, and once I finish that, I will turn it over to the team. The college prep philosophy believes that students should be exposed to a strict code of conduct, which means they do wear uniforms, they learn business etiquette in terms of speaking, they have business cards. Discipline is expected to be, there should not be any discipline issues in a college prep environment. The day is expanded and the after-school evenings as well as weekends, and they'll talk about what that looks like. The college coursework, they'll talk about that as well. So the philosophy that's listed, really, whether it's elementary, middle, or high, that philosophy is in place on any college prep program that we have. We're going to go to the very next slide, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Foster to introduce our students and to give any other overall information that you'd like in terms of how college prep is considered a different program than the traditional program. And I think you might either need to turn it up or turn that back on. Maybe someone accidentally turned it off.
Well, I'm a teacher and I have a big mouth. So I'm going to go ahead and speak anyway. The college prep, I am just so excited about college prep, and I will continue to be excited about college prep as long as I'm here. And I have just absolutely amazing students. So you've already had an opportunity to see some of the accolades that they received, and that's just only the beginning. So let me reintroduce them to you, please. This is Tiaga Mayre, and this is Angelique Jones, and I'm sure that you would probably rather hear from them than from me. So I'm just going to step aside for a second, and if you have whatever questions you have, they have big mouths too. So you should be just fine. Come on up.
Do you guys have some questions?
No, I think we'll start off with Tiaga.
Janae, he's going to change the microphone. Just, Ms., we know that you can probably have that teacher voice too, but that might make it a little bit easier for you. As he prepares to change that, Ms. Foster, can you just share briefly how college prep is different than the traditional structure? And then we'll just mention some of the things on that list that are different, and then by then the microphone will be ready to go.
Dr. Anderson actually mentioned most of the, several of the items that make college prep a different program than a regular school setting, than a regular school setting. And I would like to say that we have an extended school year. So we actually don't, our school year does not end in May, will actually be in school in June as well for a couple of weeks. And we also have Saturday school at college prep. So for any of our students who may be having some academic challenges, we then invite them in on Saturdays, and we do interventions to make sure that our kids are on target to be at high levels of proficiency on their cap test and for their future in their high school environments as well. She already mentioned that there is business attire. So you see, this is our normal uniform that you see, and we wear the same thing as well every week, every Wednesday. And in addition to the business attire, there's also business experiences. So Dr. Anderson is gracious enough to take students with her when she goes to business meetings, and he gives our students an opportunity to interact on a business and professional level. And finally, and probably most important to me, is that my students look with me. So these students have been with me their eighth grade year and their ninth grade year, and next year I'll be able to have seven, eight, and nine. So there's this continuum of high levels of instruction and high levels of expectation of student performance.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. And Tiaga Nancy, you have your microphone.
You have your mic.
College Prep Academy, oh my gosh, I enjoy the program so much. I have never felt so supportive with my learning. Most teachers at your homeschool will only care about their class, but my college prep teachers, they will track me down for any class. They don't, they take so much care of us. They make sure that we're all, not just our schoolwork, but how we feel emotionally, and they're just always so supporting. And I've gotten so many amazing experiences that I know I would not get just from attending my homeschool. And I appreciate that so much because, like, the Scholastic Award, I would have never have even known about that program if it wasn't for being in college prep and being part of such an amazing program, giving me opportunities like this. I just enjoy it so much, and I can't put into words how much college prep has helped me and shaped me to be a better person. I have never felt so in charge of my learning than I do at college prep. At college prep, we decide our own, the students decide the success criteria in the curriculum. We had a, we had a discussion about what we wanted to learn and how to do it. And I've never had that opportunity before college prep, and I enjoy it so much because when you don't get to decide your own curriculum, you just feel like, oh, this is useless. But when you actually get to put student input in, it makes so much more of a difference.
Thank you. Way of bringing from another student. Then we just have two more slides on, we'll ask Ms. Peel to come up and then turn it over to questions, if we could.
Okay, so, so far, my college prep experience has been, has been great. I appreciate both, actually, from last year, both Ms. Foster and Ms. Jennings, and now this year, both Ms. Foster and Ms. Keithline. And I just appreciate teachers, I appreciate like how we're able to be in charge of what we want to learn. Because that makes it not only fun, but I guess it just, so far, it's really helped me so far, so like, it's actually, it's helped us become smarter almost because what we want to put in, it, I can't even put into words, it's just so much. So that's all I have to say.
As our students continue to stay up there, really, the list of items that are seen in all college prep academies, that at least from our philosophy and what we've put in place thus far, is that TCal serves grades seven through ninth. It was intended to serve grades seven and eight, but the eighth grade families asked if their children could stay, and so that's how the high school kind of continued on since TCal had the space. The accelerated curriculum and the early TCal opportunities, even if you are three or four grade levels behind, you will still be given curriculum that is two grade levels above the grade level that you should be in. And any one of them, the students or Ms. Foster, can talk about how that works in math and at ELA. The other item down below, the ACT, instead of waiting until junior year or sophomore year, which we as a district for years now have started the paying for ACT for juniors and seniors, college prep students will take that as freshmen, and then they'll have ACT tutoring. Ms. Foster volunteers her time on Saturday in the evening, so she is not a paid staff member, nor is Ms. Risley during those times. So all events that they attend, that's their own time that they are donating because it does take a level of commitment to really wrap services around in a unique way that is well beyond the traditional school day. So Saturday school is a volunteered-run school. And then the last item are also the tutoring pieces. It's the idea that this cohort structure, which is different than the traditional school, that students stay together as a group and they loop each year as a group, so they're tracked as a group. And then the college prep faculty will track them four years after they're out of high school to ensure that all classes continue to be followed. So they are actually tracking what they're taking at their home schools while they're also in college prep. The very next slide are the next steps. Ms. Risley will share a little bit about, okay, so what's next? How many students do we currently have enrolled, and what's upcoming in the future?
Good evening. Currently, we have seventy-five students enrolled, which is an increase from forty-five last year. As Dr. Anderson mentioned, we will also be, we can add a ninth grade this year, and we'll have an incoming, an additional incoming seventh grade class next year. Another piece of college prep that we hope to expand is our oldest kids are freshmen now, and as they get older, we plan to ensure that they have the opportunity to complete thirty to sixty college credit hours while they're in high school, whether that's at Washburn Tech, whether that's at Washburn, or whether that's in TPS. So that's one of our major goals as well. Additionally, we try to expand our students' access to TCal resources too. So currently, many of our freshman students are enrolled in TCal collectives, even though typically TCal is open to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So we try to increase our students' early access to those opportunities. And last but not least, we also think that it would be incredibly beneficial, given the high demand we've seen for college prep, we think it'd be incredibly beneficial to also expand to the elementary level as well. And we think that being able to really serve students from pre-K to twelve, and like Dr. Anderson said, even beyond, four years beyond, would just be an incredible trajectory to follow.
So Mrs. Risley is currently studying and researching the early college academies, which other states have, and which students spend half their day. Like our student from WIP, when you asked his schedule, they would spend half their day at college because these students will be finished with their high school curriculum when they get to their sophomore year. At the end of their sophomore year, they would have covered much of the high school curriculum under the block scheduling, certainly by junior year, when they finish those credits, allowing them to go directly to the college campus. That's the goal for those students that are ready for that experience. But that would be called the early college academy, which if you look that up, you'll see those in states, in other states. And so with that, Mrs., the very next space, Ms. Risley, let me ask you this. How many people are on the, we had eighty-one students on the waiting list, but you've gotten that down. So how many students are currently on the waiting list that we don't have slots for?
We currently have fifty-six students on our waiting list for rising, for our rising seventh grade class.
And you've already given all acceptances out, all slots have been filled?
Yes.
So if things stay as they are today, with all the letters that have been given out from the fifty-six students left, at this point, we don't have space for those students. So those parents are just being notified at this time that this month, we are continuing to explore opportunities for college prep. From that, the very last piece of the early elementary, and then they will all answer questions about next steps that you have. Ms. Lauren Peel will be the principal at Loman Hill next year, and as she prepares to take on Loman Hill, she, as did Ms. Foster previously, before she started in college prep in Missouri, both went to the Ron Clark Academy, which some of our programmatic pieces are based on in Atlanta. It's not a charter, it's not a, it's, but it is a college prep middle school. So Mrs. Peel has visited the Ron Clark Academy, incorporated many of those things, as did Mrs. Sharp previously when she visited in State Street, and she's excited about this vision moving forward. Ms. Peel, can you talk a little bit about the concept and what you're looking forward to seeing and expecting?
Sure. I'm honored to share the vision with you today for Topeka Public Schools' very first early college prep academy. We've established the programming at the secondary level, but we know that statistically, earlier interventions are so crucial in order to start closing those achievement gaps earlier. So providing an early college prep academy would allow elementary-age students to start developing these college and career readiness skills, even at the early age of preschool. So next year, instead of the secondary students presenting, they'll have preschool and kindergarteners appear presenting to you just as eloquently as these students did. I want to share with you some of the program highlights, as this program will be unique compared to other elementary schools in the district. For example, our curriculum will be accelerated. We will focus on a high level of rigorous instruction that promotes students to think critically, have collaborative discussions, and develop those problem-solving skills that they will use in their future careers. As well as learning inside of the classroom, we want to provide our students with opportunities for field experiences, to get out in the community, doing college visits, having career development training. We are so centrally located that if a student says, I want to be a nurse, you know, we can go right across the street to Stormont Vale and do some of that shadowing and training, even at the elementary age. We also want to develop these soft skills and communication skills, as you saw the students just presenting, and they did such a fabulous job. So really, working on those public speaking and communication skills at an earlier level. We also want to provide our students opportunities for doing community service for the local neighborhood, experiencing philanthropic events, and just developing some of those altruistic skills as well. So I'm really excited to partner with these ladies. We are kind of on the brink of something really special and just really starting to develop at the preschool so we can have consistency throughout the district, and students can really be on track to be college-bound after they graduate as a senior.
Thank you. We're going to open this up to questions that you might have about the concept of the elementary or the current college prep program.
Okay. Yeah, I'm curious about the admissions criteria for the current college program.
And currently, we look at students' academics, attendance, and discipline in determining acceptance.
And I will share that that's similar to, Hope Street looks at discipline as one of the items. The academic component, we have accepted students, which when we first initially took students, and we accepted students who may not be proficient, but we felt like through conversation with staff and principals and recommendation that these students, certainly if pushed and given the extended time, could do the work two grade levels above. We also are open to students who have IEPs as well, that, again, that two grade levels above is still the work that those students receive. So when we talk about academics, that's a, that picture, you know, some of it's scores, but also some of it's just a well-rounded picture of a student. Attendance, however, is, has to be above ninety percent. Yes.
Thank you. So follow-up question. What will the criteria be for accepting students in the proposed elementary for, like, a pre-K student? How will that be determined?
As Ms. Peel comes in, I'll share that the current students at Loman Hill will be grandfathered in, and so all of those students would still stay. We believe that once we share the concept that families who choose not to be part of that can choose to, you know, ask for a transfer to another school if they would like to. But much of the structure of the school day still remains the same. It's just the enriched curriculum and acceleration would look different, as well as some other related items such as uniforms. Other students coming in, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Peel, because we would like to apply in the future for a charter. We are past the deadline at this time, but a charter school for next year, an early college prep learning academy charter is the hope. We still would like for next year to open as an early college prep learning academy at Loman Hill. The charter component won't be added initially, but much of the similar things that charters would normally have in place would be, which are public schools. Ms. Peel?
Yes, we have actually already finished the application to become a charter school, so we have that ready and have another year to plan in order to start the vision for that. As far as next year, like Dr. Anderson said, we anticipate to keep all the current students at Loman Hill, so there won't be an application piece yet, but we are hoping that we can really turn this into an attraction. So where not only students in our district, but the surrounding areas are going to want to come and maybe be a part of this program, and hopefully that will attract more students to Topeka Public Schools, and in hopes to increase enrollment as well.
At the preschool level, parents who understand the concept, because at preschool, you really don't have a. you really don't have attendance yet, you really don't have behavior. We will give an assessment about readiness for school, and same with kindergarten, we will give an assessment to see where students are. If a student were to come to college prep in second or third grade, again, it's an assessment. If you are not on grade level, then you might actually be in a mixed-grade-age class to get caught up and get on grade level. And we explain that to families. So that level of entry would be somewhat of an application for next year for those, it's not an application, but it's a process to ensure students are properly placed in the right class with the right, with the right family. Preschool is automatic, the parents can just enroll in preschool, but still placing them with great attention to their skill level and readiness will be, will be addressed.
So will this look like a two-track school for our students that aren't prepared to go for the accelerated learning? I think you're my person.
Yes. Currently, Loman Hill is primarily a two-track school. We do have three periods in preschool and kindergarten, so we're hoping to keep the demographics of our student population the same. We also hope to keep all of the staff members the same. So it kind of just depends on the fluctuation of enrollment and what our projected student count is going to be for next year. I have been working with Erin Kip, and our max capacity is three-hundred-and-fifty at Loman Hill. So, you know, we're going to work really hard for recruitment this semester and start promoting and getting the word out. So just depending on what our projected numbers are for next year, that will determine the tracks.
How many students are currently at Loman Hill?
Two-hundred-and-seventy-five.
So would, would kids that graduate from Loman Hill have the inside track to go to college prep at T-Calc? I assume is that's, I mean, could, could you intercede if you didn't go to Loman Hill and get in the college prep academy?
We'll tag team a little bit on that. So they would have automatic, if you started off at a college prep, you'll be given certainly preference if you apply. But we want to look at how do we expand the middle school and the high school. And so we have some ideas about what that expansion could look like, such as allowing kids to go to the college early and have half a day, which also includes redirecting two teachers to T-Calc and repurposing them for college prep, so that instead of just two teachers, you have four teachers, and, but balancing that with staffing, so that we're not adding staffing, but repurposing a math and an ELA teacher. If we did that, we could actually take another fifty students and remove the current waiting list. So that allows for other families to continue to enroll, but it also gives, which is why this says pre-K through sixth, as opposed to pre-K through fifth, because college prep is then seventh and eighth. I think in the future, if this becomes an attraction and prevents enrollment from decreasing and allows for enrollment to increase, this may be a concept in which we look at the middle being with a full-day program, and we are meeting with the parent advisory at the college prep to see the interest of, let's see if a parent talks about leaving for, leaving at some point the district, we're talking, we're seeing what the interest is of, in being a full day, as well as maintaining the half-day component. I think those are all the things that we're exploring that we'll continue to bring back to you.
I've been so impressed with this college prep academy kids that I've met, and much of it is a tribute to their development and growth, but also to the leadership that Ms. Foster and Mr. Risley provided there. So I see you had multiple events outside of the school day, and I know you're not getting paid for those events, and I just want to commend you and thank you for your commitment to these students and growth and development. I think you're making a difference in their lives and in their growth. I can't help but wonder, to Dr. Anderson's point, though, if, it seems like if we've got a waiting list of fifty-three or whatever, and that's after the twenty-five were granted, I just wish we could offer them all, you know? I mean, I realize it takes, that's a big ask, but I've been so impressed with it, that expansion would be wonderful, but I realize that there's issues associated with that offshore, but from a relatively naive perspective, it would be wonderful if we could expand this program to allow older kids, as well as younger kids, like we're proposing here, to experience the same kind of opportunities.
Well, we are always, we're always looking forward to welcoming more students to college prep, and we're always excited about the opportunity as well. I also want to thank the board for their support, too. I know that just today, Dr. Mickelson had actually had a student who he was able to connect with a veterinary colleague of his, and just today, again, she was able to go and learn at the vet office, really kind of see hands-on how to be a veterinarian, and normally, that's not an opportunity afforded to fourteen-year-olds. So it was really amazing to have those connections. So thank you, and to the board for their support as well.
Ms. Foley?
For the students, our college prep students. I see that you have to do some community service of some kind that's required. Can you tell me and fill me in on what that might look like for each of you?
Well, I think what counts as our community service is pretty much going to events and actually meeting people and seeing our business, like what business attire looks like, and how we're supposed to communicate with people and things like that.
We also, our community service council is helping out at events at T-Calc with the robotics competition that happened a few weeks ago that councils community service do.
Thank you. Also, big shout-out to Ms. Foster for any time we have teachers that loop with their students, it just talks about high-quality instruction, and you're going to be looping with seventh, eighth, and ninth. So what respect I have for you, we all do, for you be able to loop like that, congratulations on that success, and I'm hoping that you'll be, we'll be able to use some of your experience to help other teachers teach at the accelerated rate, to help more students in our district. You are a great example.
You should know that Ms. Foster went back over the summer and got her high school certification, because she knew the students didn't want to leave, and she paid for it on her own and came back and said, "I'm keeping them for high school." And so, pretty remarkable step to take, which has now allowed us to continue with the ninth and tenth grade.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'm, thank you. I have one more question. So about the, the college prep and students and the criteria to be admitted, I understand academics, discipline, attendance. So is it recommendations by counselors, or, I'm just curious, because I think of all the, the parents that maybe just don't know, so.
And we'll tag team that, because we believe that even without a parent participating, that we still can accept you as a college prep. So that is not a requirement, but if there's a student that is three or four grade levels behind, we will initiate a call to say, "Tell us about the student," and as we look at the waiting list. We believe that if you accelerate and give students, even if they're a student that might not have had these experiences, if you accelerate and give students high-level curriculum and teach, teach to the top, and extend the school day in time for them to catch up, then they will catch up, you know? So that means a homeless student, a foster student, a student whose parent may not show up and sign them up for private school, or, or sign them up for college prep, that student as well may be a student that's admitted. And we have some students who, homeless students and other students that are in college prep, currently doing quite well, I may say. So really, it's just the three items that we mentioned. And if we go beyond that, it's just because maybe they scored at level one or two for many, many years, and one would think that they probably can't keep up with the accelerated pace. We might say it's an academic probation that you're accepted, but it doesn't totally take you out.
Is it like a committee of people that, that select which students?
Yes, we were able to really look at different data points, and then also, as a committee, decide who would be part of the college prep program for next year.
And that committee really is, to be really transparent, the two improvement specialists, Mr. Dick, I'm sorry, not Mr. Dick, Mr. Our Data Dude, Dr. McDonald, who is actually presenting at the National ESOP Conference today on data and equity, so, which is why he's not here. And then, Mrs. Risley is our other improvement specialist. I look at the final list, and then, because we now have a waiting list, we actually will sit down with the instructional coach, which is Mrs. Foster, to have a final look as we get ready to decide who might be able to take any added slots if we add slots within the fifty. So it's a pretty small group of people. It's really administration and the improvement specialists that look at that piece.
Okay. So the, the initial list comes from the middle school counselor?
Parents just apply. We give the application open to anyone. Anyone can apply. It's in the community news, the principals give it out, and then anybody applies. From those applications, then the process starts. So, did you want to add anything to that?
I was just going to make sure that, to kind of second what you said about trying to make sure there's no barriers in the application process. We want it to be open and accessible to everybody to apply, and so we really make sure that, like Dr. Anderson said, all the principals are aware, families are aware, just that it's advertised, so anybody can apply.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I assume there are students that don't succeed there, so despite everybody's effort, they may not have the personal motivation or whatever to do it, and so I assume those kids are, are moved back to their home school. Is that accurate?
Well, currently, we've had, basically, we have been trying to really make sure that we support students in any way possible. So we've had two students leave, or actually, three students leave between eighth and ninth grade, because they thought that the high school rigor might be something they didn't want to undertake, even though we encourage them to stay and encourage, because we'll provide that support. However, we try to just really make sure that we provide every effort possible. You saw Saturday school, after-school. I mean, we, we want our kids to stay, and we want them to do well in it, so.
Ms. Foster, did you need to add anything to that?
I would, just like to add that the only other draw from, from college prep, especially between at that ninth grade level, are the activities that happen at ninth grade. So we make every effort as well to make sure that our college prep high schoolers have an opportunity to explore and participate in all of the high school activities. So that's another way that we are able to make, ensure that they stay with us, so they're not losing out. That was a big concern in moving to that ninth grade level of not being able to participate in activities, or not being able to participate in sports. So we make sure that we adjust and work around our kids, so that they are not missing any high school experiences whatsoever.
I may miss the experiences these kids get, so I wish it was available when I was there, your age, and even younger now, I think, for the elementary level to be equally successful, so.
They've already stayed the night overnight at Mizzou, and they've visited their colleges, and have had some exciting experiences for middle school.
Yes.
They've paired up with another college prep in another state, and it's really something that I think, as we watch this grow, we may want to expand in some pretty powerful ways in Topeka as a way to accelerate and keep on track. College prep is not necessarily a place that every student will agree to succeed in. So if a student does have difficulty, they give the rest of that year, but if they refuse to wear their uniform, or not come on weekends, or just refuse and say they don't want to be there, it does take a level of will, at least from the parent, to keep a student in the program over time. And they've had that experience. In fact, they wouldn't let them go, and I had to help them with that for those few students.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. We have an action item here, is that valid?
And the discussion and action is just giving us permission. As you know, previously, I was so excited about college prep, I just went and did it and shared it later. And this time, I know to ask first, if the concept of elementary is something that you are willing to support, so that Ms. Peel can continue with her planning and taking action on the Early College Prep Academy being an option moving forward at Loman Hill, we would ask for that. Action already, and it's on discussion, so I'm going.
Do we need to vote on that, or is it just a nod of the head, or a motion to move to an action?
If it's already on action, then you would need to take some sort of a vote.
Okay.
So a motion and a vote, so a motion to allow administration to continue exploring elementary college prep?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the creation of the Early College Prep Academy as presented.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any, any further discussion? Mr. Munoz?
All things come with its pros and cons. What, is there any, anything you could see moving forward with this, you know, for us to notice, any, to take note of before we vote, as moving forward with this particular action item?
Is that for me? Are you asking for me to talk to that?
Well, maybe for the group here, or have we discussed, and is there anything, any drawbacks for moving forward with this?
I think it would be the existing students of Loman Hill. I've got to think that most parents would advocate for their kids to get the best education possible, but some may not be prepared for the rigor. So I'm confident that we would have alternatives available for, for kids that may not be ready for that. I think the pro could be also, we could attract students from their districts potentially as well.
Ken, I definitely see the pros of this, and being somebody who's first person in her family go to college, and to be exposed to that, I think I see a lot of benefits. And just from what we've heard, I just want to make sure I understand this before we vote. Is there anything else we should be aware of before we move forward?
From, on this end, no, this is really the concept of Early College Prep Academy, and being able to have Loman Hill as the site to kick that off. So even the students that aren't ready for that level of rigor, Ms. Peel will ensure that we support those students in the coming years in ways that make sense, and teachers with how to teach at that level. Next year, we anticipate if we expand the college prep at middle school in some way, that Ms. Foster's schedule is freed up, so that she can support and help train the teachers at the elementary. That's the plan, and encourage instructional coach opportunity. So I'm not really seeing a con, other than the fact that this idea of the college concept being at one site only. The only other item in the future in the waiting list is an issue currently, to be fully transparent, but it won't be an initial issue at Loman Hill. Ms. Peel, is there a con that you know of that we should say in this space that I missed, given that you are the administrator? Can you come to the actual phone, please? There's some negative or drawback that you might know of that I missed?
One thing that I am just in my planning and thinking about is how are we going to fund this, you know, getting the uniforms. So I've been speaking with Larry Robbins on what business partners can we work with in the community that might be able to give some donations. I met with Gary Minkie last week, and he was pretty clear that the budget for Loman Hill will stay the same for next year as it was for this year. So we're just going to have to be really creative of how are we going to move forward with this program with the same budget as we did last year, but I know anything is possible, and I will work as hard as I need to in order to provide the funding for that.
And to say that, Mrs. Risley, who is in the audience, the middle school concept does not require a great deal of added funding. Is that correct, Mrs. Risley? As you think through that con, because the philosophy is that with what you have, we can accelerate learning and teach differently. And now, again, there is some volunteerism of this over the weekends and things like that that we've embedded, but in Loman Hill's case, they receive title funds, which is not what college prep middle school students have been using. So your budget is, first year was what, a thousand dollars? So your budget is, first year was what, $1,000?
Yeah, it's extremely small. I would say that we have been really lucky that Mr. Robbins, like Ms. Peel said, I know, has also been able to set up partnerships with us for uniforms. We actually have been able to be as thrifty as possible with uniforms to try to make sure that it's not an added budget increase. And then, like Dr. Anderson said, we are just trying to be as creative as possible. So we have events for families, and we try to keep them as cost efficient as possible. But otherwise, there's not many added expenses, other than college trips, I would say.
So that would be the only other drawback. But we believe that in order to do this, it should be able to happen with the current budget without anything else additional, but using it differently and using time differently. That is really the philosophy, so that it inspires others to think about teaching differently. The uniforms is an expense that Mr. Robbins has been helpful with in terms of, really responsible for in terms of the partnerships. But beyond that, Mr. Robbins, any other expense that you need to address? He said absolutely not. So with that in mind, I don't know that there's another drawback that I can suggest. And we hope that any decline in enrollment, it turns that around in a positive way for Kansas as a whole, and becomes an attraction. And another option and choice for families, I think, with Kansas and Topeka?
Thanks, sir, everybody.
So we have a motion to second to approve the early college prep academy concept. Any other discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote?
All votes are in. Motion carries again.
Great, thank you. We're now down to board our comments. Mr. Munoz, everything?
I continue to be open to be at as many different places as I can to learn about our schools, learn about our students, administration, those who make our schools function from day to day, and all of the programs that go on in our 501. So everything that I've seen has been amazing, and I look forward to learn more as time goes on.
Feel like I've talked too much already tonight. I have like a whole list of places that I've been this last few weeks, and one that sticks out is going to T-Cup. And Mr. Robbins asked me to come and judge a tie contest in the seventh grade college prep. I got a chance to visit the awesome Ms. Foster's room. And it's amazing when Mr. Robbins comes in and the attention and respect that he draws from the students. There was an immediate respect when he came in. And the students arise, and somebody introduces him. But probably the most remarkable thing is that it is a contest, and there is a prize. And he provides that prize himself. He takes a great respect in our students succeeding, so I really appreciated that. I appreciated Dr. Newe inviting me to her district citizens advisory, wrong one, the Equity Committee, and I got to see new faces of leadership in the district. And I really appreciated that invite to learn more people. I did go to the District Citizens Advisory Council, so that was very interesting to see what they're looking into. So many things. I was invited to a luncheon to catch up on a professional development opportunity. There's so many things, and 501 is an incredible district, and we need to get that word out there. We need to tell everyone that 501 is the place you should have your child. I'm very proud to be a board member.
Yes, Ms. Bowley. So true. When we were looking for our last house five years ago, I remember telling our realtor, it has to be in 501. It has to be in 501. And anyway, here I am. Okay, I got to experience something really great this week at Topeka High that I wanted to talk about. And I think it's something that, I don't know how aware people are that this is happening, so I really wanted to talk about it tonight. So Topeka High has a partnership with a high school in China. And so this year, it was China's turn to come to Topeka. And this is a program that's facilitated through Washburn's International House. And it was really, really impressive. And so this program's been going on, I don't know how many years. I want it maybe three or four, but I'm not exactly sure. So last year, Topeka High students went to this high school in China, stayed with a Chinese host family. This year, 10 students from Suzhou, China, came to Topeka High. They stayed with a host family. My family hosted Bo Yan, and he stayed with us. We just took him yesterday back to Washburn, 3:00 in the morning, to catch his flight. And it was just such a great experience. So while he and his nine classmates were at Topeka High, this was coordinated by Mr. Hayes, by the way. I'm Miss Morrissey, but Mr. Hayes is like, this is kind of his thing. And he also went last year to China. While there at Topeka High, they shadow students, so they go to all the classes with students. And then I got to participate in the after-school club activity, and that was, that was just, that was great. So they got to see the drum line, they got to see the step team, they got to see theater club, they participated in the international club, and so met other students from around the world. And I'm really happy that our district is doing this because, you know, programs like this are so important for our students learning about Chinese culture, for learning about, for decreasing xenophobia, you know, just by being with students from another culture. And not only that, like our students, it can start to incite an interest in that, in learning the Chinese language. You know, this language is the most spoken language, first, most spoken first language globally. And so I think of our students like my own children, getting to spend time with this boy. Like now they have a more of an interest in Chinese. And so I think of our Topeka High students who are like, oh, maybe I want to study Chinese because Chinese is offered at Topeka High. And so I just think that'd be really great for more students to take interest in Chinese. And just being, having even some basic proficiency in Chinese is going to really give them such an edge in the global marketplace and then all the other benefits that bilingualism brings. I'm often talking about Spanish, but now I'm talking about Chinese. And I'm really proud that our district participates and partners with this high school in China. Xie xie. Thank you, Chinese.
Tuesday, February 12th, I'll be tagged along with the JAG and AVID programs in Highland Park in Topeka High to attend a leadership conference at K-State. Something they allow me to do once a year. And also, I just want to make everybody aware of the, not aware, that former board member and past board president Joe Douglas passed away Tuesday evening. His services are scheduled for Sunday at 3:30 at Asbury United Methodist Church at 12th and Buchanan, but there's a visitation at Bowser Johnson on Saturday, I want to say between 5:00 and 7:00. Joe was a role model for me and suffered a great loss. Him and his wife had been married 70-something years. Let's see, I think that...
Just briefly, I attended the DCAC meeting this past week, and they seemed on target for their presentation of aesthetic topics. And so we'll hear that later in the year. And then just a comment about the early academy. I've often thought that if my kid's a little, I'd want to send him to Scottville Language and then to the College Prep Academy. And now, now I think there's choices that parents are going to have to make where they send their child to elementary school just because there's some exciting things happening within Topeka High schools. So excited to have some options like that for our patrons. Is that, we're ready for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
I have a second.
I second.
It's always seconds, so do we vote by hand here, sister?
Pretty quick tonight.
Oh, you're, you're ready to go, are you?
Ready.
Okay, or vote on computer?
All votes are in. Motion carries again.
Thank you, dear adjourn.
...